Anyway, this will be a meeting of the Town and County Board of Trustees, March 11th, 2021. Roll call.
Cliff?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Wes?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
Keith?
Okay, report from Hennessy United Board. Anybody got anything?
I forgot all about it. We met, we set the date, which was what you said, what was?
Was it the 16th?
Yeah.
I can't remember now.
Okay.
October. We moved it.
Moved it to October.
Yeah.
Moved it later.
That's what it was. All about Hennessy.
Yeah.
Okay.
And a lot of that was due to OU was playing home while she was at home on weekends that we normally have it.
Yeah. And then the following weekend that we had, Watauga, I still hadn't heard a positive
Oh, you haven't.
From them that they're gonna have there, but he thought that they were gonna, and that would've been the following weekend that we would've talked about.
Yeah, it was.
That was the best date that we could come up with. So we'll hopefully get his weather and try it.
Okay.
And Wes is gonna be handling the vendors, wine vendors, and Teresa, the chocolate, as we've done in the past. And then we also had, oh gosh, who's the guy, Golden Chick, I can't remember his name, Blackberry. He came to our meeting and asked to use, you know, the tent and the stage and those things. And we said that that was fine for the car show.
Yeah.
And can't remember what else, something else that he was, we said that we'd help. And he was also needing some help with some shuttles. And Scotty said that he had a couple of vehicles that they could use. And that was mainly why we met, so we could go ahead and approve that for him. And the only other thing was the the high school senior leadership class. I haven't been able to talk to the people who had helped us sponsor it in the past, but I want to do it this next fall. I mean, we didn't do it the previous fall because of COVID.
Been a crazy year.
But we really would like to do it. I just couldn't, I didn't feel like I could ask those speakers to come because that's the way we did it. As you all know, we did it with panels of people there, and I didn't feel like it would be safe for them to be there.
Right. Okay, Wes sounds good. Anything else from Hennessy United? All right, item three is consider approval of consent agenda. A, minutes of the February meeting. B, approval of claims as follows. February purchase orders, 2,06267. March purchase orders, 20,57981. March restricted sales tax fund, 97,0081277, and that's broken down under there for you. The March library fund, 34775. The March street and alley fund, 4866. And transfer 50,68492 from CDBG checking, 104900, to pool checking, 143686. And C, accept the following reports, treasurer, library, and police. Has anybody got any additions or corrections to the consent agenda? And can you all hear me okay through this man?
Okay.
I'm gonna move to approve consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call.
Wes?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, item four, citizens' comments. Anybody got anything?
I do, unless you agree to discuss it later. The, that rescue plan, can you tell us about that?
Um, well, I just got the email today from, from the OML president that in the relief, American relief, um, American rescue plan, um, that municipalities will get some relief out of that. And it's set up on, based on the census, uh, the population. And then it's also, it cannot exceed 75% of your budget, which whatever your budget was on January, I think January 20th of 2021, 2020. And so based on that, we're gonna be eligible for, it depends on how they look at our budget, if they look at our budget as a whole or if they just look at our general fund budget. But we could either be entitled for the whole 360,000 or we can be entitled for around 295,000.
Great.
I'm sorry, 360,000?
Mm-hmm. 360 is the max.
Max, and what's the other?
Um, if they only look at our budget for like our general fund.
Okay.
Then we would be looking at around 295,000.
Tiffany, is that restricted as to how we spend it?
No, it'll be just like.
It's just to boost the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Is this a second check?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we received 170, I think it was around 178, 171,000 back in August, I believe it was August of last year. And then that was the COVID relief, any, we had to show any type of like PPE that we had bought. Any type of like, if we paid the firefighters going out on calls, if we paid the police department. We were able to reimburse them.
That was a good deal.
Reimbursed, get reimbursement on that.
Did you, did you have to, on that first one, did you have to do a lot of legwork for it?
Um, yeah, yes, I did.
And this one you went to, probably?
I'm not sure. They haven't come out and said, we're just gonna give it to you, or they haven't come out and said, you've got to show certain expenses. They haven't come out and said that yet. The way they're, the way they're just saying it is like, we're gonna give it to you. But I don't really think. I don't really think that that's how it's gonna work. But at least it's gonna be there where we can go after it.
Yeah.
Tiffany, was there anything in that announcement that we have to spend it all at one time in one year, or can we kinda carry it over?
The, it's, it's a relief for what has happened to this, to the city so far, like, um, the sales tax. You know, the sales tax has been hit in all these municipalities. That's kind of like to help with those types of losses.
It sort of implies that we need to spend the money right away.
Um, they have to send it out right away. But I have not read into it that we have to spend it right away.
I suppose that.
I think it's to kind of reimburse for what we've already not maybe spent richer, but lost.
Yeah.
Like Tiffany said, due to our sales tax being down because of the COVID issues. And am I right about that? So I think it's more of a reimbursement, but who knows, they may attach some spending requirements.
They might.
We just won't know till we get the check and the, whatever comes with it.
Yes.
I don't understand exactly how the reimbursement works, but there'll be explanations coming, I'm sure, so.
Yes, yeah.
Is there a difference between the federal and state?
Um, the feds, what happens is that money is given to the state and then the state divvies it out.
So can the state require you more or the federal or?
Um.
I read a little bit about it, but it.
Yeah. Um, normally the state doesn't require more than what the feds require. Usually the feds require more than what the state does.
Right, so I figured since we have a Republican governor versus a Democrat president, maybe they put a little bit more stipulations to it.
Yeah, I don't know. Usually the, you know, just like if you're getting, trying to get FEMA money versus say, um, the Oklahoma Emergency Management money, there's a lot more paperwork to do to get FEMA money than there is to go through the emergency management. So feds are, there's a lot of red tape. Did that answer your question, Barb? But I will encourage.
I wasn't thinking about that. Yeah, I do.
This is on, since Jack is recording this, I will encourage, I was reading through all of that stuff, that the businesses check into it and individuals check into it because there is some funding for businesses and there is some funding for some, some farmers and some individuals and different things. So I would encourage other people to check into it too. Even restaurants. There's a, there's an item in there for restaurants, so.
They have probably been hit harder than.
Probably harder than anybody, the restaurants and the bars and.
Right.
Yeah. All right. Any other citizens' comments? Okay, item five, other scheduled business. Discuss, approve, deny, reject, and/or take action on the following. Item A is discussion and action to approve payment of young contracting pay application number three using CDBG funds for CDBG grant number 17767-19. This will be on our, on our drainage work that's going on and.
On this application for payment, there's one here that says total approved for this month is 32,53977. And over here on the engineer certification is 28,54668.
That's the change orders. That's change orders that were approved.
Okay. So the payment's gonna be the 28,546.
If you look above that in the little box, current payment due this application.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
That down there in the bottom where you see additions and deductions, that is change order activity.
For the month?
Change order activity where we had to add that change order to go to bury the drainage.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the payment to young contracting using the CDBG grant number 17767-19 for 28,54668.
Second, roll call please.
I'm just, I'm just curious. I don't know if there's a main difference, but do you think we should add to your motion, application number three? I'm just, would that matter?
What was that motion?
It was the third payment?
I would like to see if you would add to your motion to satisfy application number three, I guess. I don't think it's gonna be an issue, but who knows?
Do you have it too?
I'm sorry?
You have it too.
Yeah.
Oh, you have it.
No, go ahead.
If you got.
No, no, you go, go ahead.
We've got a motion as second, so.
I'm probably being too picky, but.
Okay.
Well, you can amend.
You can amend it, just to add at the end for payment application number three.
They moved a lot of dirt over there. I wonder, they've done a lot of stuff.
Okay, approve payment for the young construction using the CDBG grant number 17767-19 for 28,54668 for the payment of protection of the number three.
Bert got seconded.
Roll call.
Thank you, Bill.
Yes, sir.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Richard?
I'm sorry, I didn't know you had that. Okay, item B is discussion with possible action to set the summer 2021 rates for the Hennessy Aquatic Center. I know last year, um, we were so anxious to get the pool open. And when we finally got it open, we wanted to leave our rates as they were when we closed the old pool to give, we wanted everybody possible to use it and kinda, last year was kind of a shakedown year to see where we were at, I think. Am I wrong, Tiffany?
Yes.
And so Tiffany's proposed some, some rate changes that look to me like they correlate with Kingfisher and Enid. Last year we were $2 for anyone up to 17. 18 to 64 was $3 and 65 plus was $2. Individual season pass was 50 and a family was 120. And then the pool parties were 150 and 200, depending on the number of people there. Uh, what she's got proposed for 2021 is up to age two, $2. 3 to 17, $3. 18 to 64, $4. 65 plus, $2. And then individual passes, 75, family 150. And parties under 50, 150, and over 50, 200, which is unchanged. You have anything to add to that, Tiffany?
Um, well, I was looking at the zero to two and I know, cause I know last year they would come in with like a little one and stuff and it's kind of hard to charge them, but we still have to add them into our, cause you know, we have a limit on how many people we can have come into the pool. We have a, you know, a capacity. And so we pretty much have to charge them something, but I didn't want it to be like the same zero to 17. So that's why I did that. I mean, we could even go a little bit lower, but I felt that they needed to pay something cause then we would have all these little ones in there. And then also we get a.
They're using up our capacity for us.
Yes.
Yeah, I understand.
We also have a lot of seniors who are watching their, their grandchildren and bringing their grandchildren up there to spend the day at the pool. Which I like that because we don't have parents then.
Yeah.
Bringing their kids and just dropping them off. So to me, I think it's good to encourage the seniors to, to come and enjoy it with their grandkids too.
I agree.
So that's why I put a lower rate for the seniors this year.
Some of the seniors last year were in the water, going off the diving board. I mean, I loved it because we wanted this to be a aquatic center for the entire family to use. And boy, did they, they did. It was great.
Yeah.
On the family pass, would that, I'm just, I don't know how you all do that. Is that for four people?
Yes, the family pass is for four people and it has to be in the household.
And then it's additional for another.
For each person after the four people.
Okay.
Tiffany, are those passes silver at the pool?
Um, yes, they are.
They don't buy them here.
Some, like before the pool opens, we do get a couple that are bought here, but majority of them are sold at the pool.
Since last summer was, season was kind of short against the first year. I'm gonna ask a media unfair question.
I liked it.
Would you be able to estimate what a typical month would look like in terms of revenue for the pool and the cost of the pool?
Um, Richard, I am so sorry, I did not get that done.
It's, I said it's an unfair question because it's, it was the first year and all of that. I just, in terms of cost, that's what I'm thinking.
As far as our expenditures, I never got actually our expenditures, but I know our income, I can't remember what our income per month was. But it was like, if I'm not mistaken, it was like $10,000 a month. It was, and where we're like, we were lucky to get $10,000 the whole season at the old pool.
And that's something.
My other question is this thing with parties. When we, when there's a party there, we have to provide guards?
Yes.
And people at the front?
Um, we do not provide anybody at the front because we put up a sign that it's a party. And so we just put, and our concession is not open during a party. So, cause they're allowed to bring in, you know, what they want for their, it's kind of like a private party where you can bring in your, you know, your cake, your ice cream, whatever. And then our lifeguards, we provide based on the number of people, we base our lifeguard count on that. So we, we were only gonna do, I can't remember what we started out with, under 50. I think we started out with maybe two guards, under 50, and we had to bump it up to three.
I assume there's some state requirements on that.
Um, there is, um, if I'm not mistaken, it's like 35 people per lifeguard. It's way up there. We're way, I mean, we cover, our lifeguards are.
We're well covered.
Yes.
I, uh.
Maybe even 50 people per lifeguard.
I guess I may make a comment. That's awful cheap entertainment for a group party. I don't know where else you could go to have a wonderful experience and accommodate such a large group at such a low cost.
I, I agree, Richard, and I thought about, um, recommending a little bit higher on those. But after looking at Kingfisher and Enid, and I have Fairview rates, but I wasn't gonna even put those on there because they're like very low. But like Fairview, to book their parties, they're only $100 for two hours.
But if I, if I recall, if I recall correctly, I, I think every night, last season was reserved for a party.
It was.
Every night.
Mm-hmm.
Were there out of town people coming?
We did.
For out of town?
We did. We had even a baseball team that was training somewhere. They were from Vanita and they were training somewhere and they booked our pool for a pool party when they were in the area.
You know, when you do these events, uh, sometimes, uh, I can't give an example, but I know from experience that maybe if you went and ran a place to have a party, wedding reception site, they'll charge, they'll throw other fees in, a cleanup fee, a lifeguard fee and that sort of thing. I realize that maybe the other towns are cheaper. But the pool Hennessy has is just 10 notches above all the other pools.
I agree.
And I kind of think it, I guess I should go ahead and say it, I think it should be a little higher.
But I also want everybody to be able to experience the town pool. And we do have some people who may not be able to afford, you know, it's hard for them to even afford the 150 and to raise it up to 200. To me, it's, it's about being able to.
I, that, that's a very valid point.
You know, because they're paying for this pool with their, with the sales tax dollars. And I wanna be able to, right now, be able to let them enjoy the pool also.
Now, some jurisdictions have two charges. The locals have a charge and then someone coming from the outside has a higher charge.
We could do that.
And I know that was done.
The only problem with that is where do you cut off the definition of a local? Because people here in city limits are Hennessy citizens. I mean, they are citizens of the town of Hennessy. But we've got so many people in the rural area that are outside city limits, but they're still paying sales tax that made the pool possible.
And like people from Dover. I mean, you know, they, they shop here too, so.
And I see your point, Richard. I, I, I do. I am just so grateful to the taxpayers for passing that pool.
Absolutely.
It is such a boon to our community and our, I love it. One night Tiffany told me several times last year that she'd been out there, we had all these people from out of town. Well, maybe their gas tank's empty and they have to fill up, or maybe they go get a sandwich or a hamburger, maybe they stop at Sonic. So I really love that we're, that we've got something that is a drawing factor to.
Well, even like.
But I, I do agree with you. I would hate to see people from Enid book that pool on parties and knock somebody from Hennessy that's paying sales tax to keep it, to have built it, to keep a party from Hennessy from having it.
We are gonna open up more time slots because we are going to, I think it's Friday night? What they said, Saturday night? Um, Saturday, um, the pool closes at 6:00. Um, the pool party will start at 6:30 and go to 8:30. And then we're, since we have lights, we're gonna go with another pool party from 9:00 to 11:00.
Oh.
So we're gonna have two pool parties on Saturday.
There's a lot of people that like to party late at night. They've been at the pool first.
So we are gonna get more, more availability for pools, you know.
Well, looking at these figures, it's gonna be a great revenue generator. But I think that's an extremely good idea to have. And it wouldn't surprise me if some, the first party.
Give people opportunity.
Reserve a second.
It may be so.
$30 for the, the senior citizen. I think that's a good, a good thing.
Yeah, I, I like that idea myself.
I really do.
I'd like to, when does the calendar open for booking?
I think we said April, the middle of April. I think we said April 1st.
You what?
I think we said April 1st. Cause we have to get these rates in.
I've already been told to get the calendar, so.
Yeah, you're like sixth in line. You're like sixth in line.
I gotta wait for comments.
How can I be if it isn't open yet?
You can. No, they haven't made a motion yet, but.
Listen, I gotta ask, and ask probably Tiffany, but you mentioned grandparents. Like me, I take my grand, uh, grandkids to swimming pool. If I buy a season pass, that means that I'd have to do an individual for me and a family for them. Definitely would have to be.
Yeah, cause Keith had to do that with his one last year.
I, I have a suggestion, but not a deal breaker. I like what you've done here. I like this idea. I would like to see a, a discount for a season pass for seniors. Instead of $75 for a senior, meaning 65 over, uh, I would like to see that. Did you say 30?
I said 30.
$30 or so. I mean, I, I don't think we need to encourage them to be there. And if they bypass, they're liable to come up more often. But just a suggestion I have.
And thankfully, they opened their pool to the full capacity, did it?
I don't know if they did that.
In the beginning, they didn't, I don't think. I think changed it.
I think they ended up.
I know they just, uh, they just had their time eating on this swimming pool cycle last week. I didn't know if they had to adapt to full capacity or.
She said they're gonna.
No, that's in the calendar.
We're gonna open Memorial Day weekend.
Okay. I want to open my pool, my pool.
Is the pool gonna, for this party thing, is it gonna be open every night of the week?
So we do night swim Tuesday, Thursday, Sunday. Night swim for, you know, that's open to everybody. And then we do pool parties the rest of the nights. So four nights a week are pool parties.
Four nights a week.
And we had pretty much every night.
The night swim was two.
Pool parties, like all four nights.
Oh, yeah, including Saturday and Sunday nights?
No, Sundays are, are night swim.
Okay.
But what would that be, Monday, Wednesday? Friday. Friday, Saturday for pool parties, and they were pretty much booked last year.
You all right?
Huh?
Um, but they want the seniors. That with the $2 versus three and four, I don't know, $30 is kind of, but I mean, that's.
Not true. I, I just was thinking there's a lot of seniors that are on fixed end zone.
Yeah.
And maybe they would do, and maybe it would be good for them to go swimming. I mean, I'm just thinking.
That's true.
Health-wise.
Well, because too, we do, um, they would open up in the mornings to do water walking.
Well, that there you go.
And so they usually do that from 11 to 12. And so.
I mean, we're just kind of giving them what they do. To me, you're, you're offering them a, a better deal.
I like that. I, I was thinking more around the $50.
Either that, yeah, that. I was. Well, either that, yeah, I, I was thinking a pool rate.
And they're in their pack.
I, I told Tiffany I wasn't gonna be here.
Showing that. What we're discussing right now is going with the top right-hand square, which is what Tiffany's proposed. But we're discussing, um, giving senior citizens a break on a season pass. Instead of the seventy-five, do something less for seniors.
The fifty was actually what I was thinking, but this is not a doer ideal for me. I just, I just think it's, uh, it wouldn't be great if we could help.
Help me? That hundred and fifty dollars is gonna hurt me.
Well, we can make that up to you if we lower the seniors. Then you get your mom, you get your momma's pass.
I got my momma's pass last year.
I forget Jack's recording tape's gonna see that I called her a senior student. Sorry.
It's all right. I joined the club two months.
You know...
It didn't hurt to know.
He was talking about grandparents taking the grandchildren of their mom while I took her grandkids up there. Not a lot, four or five times last summer. And she pays. And I asked her about that. I said, what do you think about that? And she's, cause she doesn't swim, or she didn't, I would say she doesn't. She said, you have to charge. You gotta, you gotta charge to get in there.
Yeah, absolutely.
It wasn't an issue to her.
We did not, I mean, they did not have much...
Well, you're not talking about a ten, fifteen dollar entry for you. Two dollars, you get in there, you know? I don't know what else you could do for two dollars or three dollars, you know? Spend the whole afternoon.
The price ain't, the price ain't bad. It's like the individual prices, like, you know, me being off last year, not, you know, working especially bad. I took my grandkids over my family every day. You know, if I bought a season pass and the day I was sick, my wife wanted to go there, she couldn't use my individual pass. So, you got, you know, you're gonna spend a hundred and fifty bucks on two people. You know, if a husband and wife like me, you're gonna spend a hundred and fifty bucks on two people to take your grandkids over there, you know? Uh, like, I'd be, I'm gonna be there. I, I just went to my backyard without it over there, more than ever swimming in my house. It was, you know, but it is, it's fun to be over there, I mean, you know, for the kids. That's the only thing I was talking about, like the season pass, you know?
I understand. I get it. Are y'all looking at me? Wait, uh, Keith, you got anything?
Well, I just... So, were you wanting to lower the season pass for the, for senior citizens to, to fifty dollars?
Well, that's what I'm suggesting. It's not, you're not gonna hurt my feelings if you don't. I'm just thinking...
Right. What if we did something for, cause you have a single, an individual, then you have a family. What if we put in for like a, like two, made a, made something in the middle for, for two?
For, oh, a season pass for two people?
Yeah, you know.
Keith, if you could even find that a little more explicit, make it for two people.
Or happy five or...
I don't even...
Something I can...
Why don't you have a rate?
That's why I brought it up.
The lifeguards, the lifeguards wouldn't know, I mean, I don't know how they keep track anyway. Tiffany could tell us. But they would have to be able to check, you know, if you come in and you had a pass for two, which obviously you wouldn't. But, um, they would have to know that, that your pass was just a two-person pass.
I think...
So, what we could do is just the individual, we could also add twenty-five dollars for an additional person also. So...
Yeah, well, that, you, you have that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the way you do it.
So, we could do that on the individual too. So, like...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. An individual pass plus one other person would be a hundred.
A hundred, yes.
I said a hundred fifty.
I see what you're saying.
I, I like, I think that would be, I think that would be good.
Even husband and wife, a hundred and twenty-five dollars can fit that, you know what I'm saying? Husband and wife. They're family, parents, kids.
Do the lifeguards just know who has passes or...
And they fill out, um...
Cause we don't have, we don't give cards to people to show that...
No, they fill out a, a little note card on, and then who's on the pass, and we give them a number. And then they, when they sign in, they put their number.
Oh, okay.
So, they get a, they get a pass number.
I see. Okay. I wasn't sure how that worked.
Okay.
Yeah, I remember when I was going up to the old pool, we used to get an actual card.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. That's weird.
I, um, I wanna make one call. Man, Tiffany, it appears to me you're putting in a lot of time.
You got that, Cliff?
Yes, sir.
Very much appreciated. To me, it's like running a business on Main Street, along with all the other things you're doing.
I take pride and joy in that pool. I mean, to me, the town, the community, I am very grateful of the taxpayers who approved, approved, I mean, the citizens who approved that pool. And to me, as my job, I feel like I need to take care of it.
Well, I would say we thank you because you're wearing about four or five hats right now. Swimming pool manager, which I think is like operating a private business on Main Street. And you're also running, you're the company works director and all the other stuff, grant writer and...
There's a lot of people that are stepping up to the plate, so. But thank you, Richard. Thank you.
And I concur, Richard, but like...
Does the pool have any surprises during the minus fourteen degree?
We won't know until May.
I make a motion for the race for the swimming pool, zero to two, the two dollars. Three to seventeen, three dollars. Eighteen to sixty-four, four dollars. Sixty-five and over, two dollars. Individual season pass, seventy-five dollars. For two people, a season pass of a hundred dollars. Family of four, season pass, a hundred and fifty. That's for a family of four. If more than that, it's twenty-five. Uh, parties under fifty is a hundred and fifty dollars. And parties over fifty is two hundred dollars.
Cliff?
Roll call?
Cliff?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
All right. Discussion with possible action today's next spring cleanup week. I can't believe it's that time already, but it is.
I'm glad it is.
Yeah. After the winter, we can add up to him.
I'm tired of it.
Yeah, for sure. Anybody got any thoughts? Tiffany, do you have a recommendation on that?
Um, yes, I do.
Let's go with it.
If I can remember now. Um, April sixteenth.
Sixteen, one, six?
Uh-huh.
Huh?
Yes. To the twenty-fifth.
I'm gonna move that ready player, April sixteenth to April twenty-fifth as spring cleanup.
Second. Okay.
Good to Keith.
Yeah, before we vote, um, what are we including in next year?
Um, well, the duck will be open every day.
Free for residents?
Free, free for, you know, um, Hennessy, um, and Kingfisher County residents. Because it is Kingfisher County, you know, Kingfisher County does pay for half of their loss. But...
Curbside, on the finances, no? Okay. Okay. So, just the duck will be open.
And free.
It'll be free. Okay. Okay. Roll call?
If, I would say that if there is a handicapped person or, um, that we could probably get ahold of somebody to be able to help them.
Catching, or something like that?
Yeah. I know a lot of times maybe the football boys, they would come in and help too. So, um, but if there's somebody who's handicapped or just physically unable, um, that we could, they could just call town hall and we can figure out something.
I think Jimmy's kind of a pituitary, all that stuff, so, okay.
Okay, roll call please.
Wes?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay. Item D is executive session. Present twenty-five Oklahoma statute three oh seven B one to discuss hiring a pool manager. Pool assistant manager or managers. Discuss job status of Lindsay Koopsa, interim library director in executive session.
I'm gonna move, we convene into a, an executive session.
I'll second that. Roll call?
Wes?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
I would like to invite Harold Shaw, who will be an incoming board member, to join us if he would like. Harold, is that, is that all right?
I'll move to reconvene into regular session.
Second. Roll call?
Wes?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Item E, our seasonal swimming pool manager and assistant managers.
You got that too?
I got it. I got it. I don't, I don't have the names.
I'll start writing if I need to.
I don't have the names.
You got it, Bert?
Yeah.
Okay.
I got the amount, but I don't have a name.
This is on first.
Like a monkey, real football up here.
Come on, somebody. We'll be here all night.
That is one thing, Harold.
Now, the thunder just got a...
They like their motions so that the person doing the minutes actually gets exactly what is said.
Which is a real big pain in the back for the board.
That's why, that's why I try not to write.
Since it's getting videoed now, can't y'all just go back and re-watch the, uh, the ones that I was having to write it out?
I have to sit in front of it once. You wanna go back to it?
Maybe Jack can caption it and then that, the way they...
I'll transcribe the whole tape for you.
I could figure if you like a little quarter for you, you know, that's in your pocket, but it's sad.
We'd be here all day and all night. I would have had to do that for me. Oh, it's horrible.
Skip.
About done? Okay. I move to hire Jesse Scuvenek as swimming pool manager at twelve dollars per hour. And Stephanie Petosca and Juliana Macy as assistant managers at eleven dollars per hour. I'll second that. Roll call?
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Jesse Scuvenek. Wes?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, item M, discussion with possible action on employment status of Lindsay Koopsa. Am I saying that wrong?
It's called Koop, I thought it was Koop, Koopsa.
Koopsa?
It's Koopsa, Koopsa.
We just call her Lindsay.
I don't know.
I like the way you talk.
Whatever you're saying is not correct, cause I can't say it right either.
Okay.
Well, let's, let's go with it. I don't know who you're talking about.
Okay. We have a motion on Lindsay.
I move that Lindsay Koopsa be made permanent library director at, uh, who turns me figures around for...
Fifteen, fifteen.
Thank you, Danny, dollars an hour. Thank you, Buck.
I'll second that. I'll, you second. I'll, I'll second it.
Roll call?
Richard?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Okay. Item G is discussion with possible action to put a thank you marker for seventy-five thousand dollars capital donation at cemetery. Richard, um, you've got this in the, um, and I'm gonna, I'll let Tiffany speak, but we've, we've had this in the works for some time. Go ahead.
Bert and I have been working on this, but then we got COVID and he got to the hospital and...
We all understand.
So, um, but I will show you something that we're working on and what it's kind of gonna look like. Um, she sent me over kind of what, I mean, what we're... What? It's gonna be a, um, that's not the color, but...
That's what it says, isn't it?
Oh, I like the top blue ribbon.
I like this pricing.
Yeah, but it has kind of a, right there.
The middle one?
Yeah. I don't have. But this right here, it's gonna be, it's gonna be bronze, and it's gonna be right here.
Let me still hunt for my...
And let me tell you what it's gonna say. It's gonna be a twelve by twenty-four, or twenty-four by twelve, if you look at the price on there. I think it's like twelve hundred dollars. And it's gonna say, let me find my notes in here, where, I, in grateful recognition of the anonymous donor, donor whose generosity made this pavilion possible.
That's really nice.
So. Okay?
What, what's that? Kind of what you had in mind?
Well, yeah, this is very nice. I think it's great.
And it'll be, it'll be pretty good sign.
That is great.
Thanks.
It's a big sign. And probably not out of range, but why?
Where's it gonna be located, this is the place where we have the front?
No, it's gonna be on the, um, north wall that...
On the south side of the north wall.
Yeah, the south side of the north wall. And let me tell you why, Richard, because when people have services out there, they're facing the front. And we don't want that to be like a...
Centrepiece.
A centerpiece or a distraction from the service. We want it to be off to the side to where, um, people, they'll be walking by it and different things.
And honestly, Richard, being out there doing services, everybody walks through there. I really think more people will read it out there than they would have took her up on.
So, I noticed there's been a lot of services.
We've had a lot of services there and, uh, families are in awe over that pavilion. I mean, they really are, because we can see so many people. They're under a roof. They're either in the shade or out of the, out of the rain.
Especially with the...
It's, it's been nice.
And how much is the cost of this?
It's a, a little over twelve hundred dollars.
Okay. I'm ready to vote yes on it, and I'm overjoyed.
Well, you don't actually have to, because we've already got it in the works. And it's, it's within my spending. So, that's why I did not have to bring it before the board.
Okay.
Okay?
I, I wanna share the, I, I got a, I talked to Enid, Tyler, Marvel, and looking at granite that they have extra in the back. And when I told them what it was for, they said, well, you can have it for no charge. And then I went to, uh, Pearl, and they said they would install it for three hundred and fifty dollars. So, um, it would be a little cheaper, but I think the plaque is great.
What about lettering?
Yeah, well, the three fifty would include lettering and installation. I'm gonna give this to you, but I'm ready to vote for the black. But, you know, just so we get something up for that very nice donor that, uh, gave us, gave the community seventy-five thousand dollars. That was quite something.
I never knew what that pavilion cost. Richard?
Pardon?
It, do you, do you know it was seventy-five thou? I never knew what it cost.
Well, I, I figured I picked it up here. Well, I, I figured I picked up here.
Oh, really?
No, the town doesn't know how much it costs.
We were never told.
Oh, we never told.
Uh-uh, no, we were never told how much it cost. We were kept out of that because we, the only thing, they would ask us questions out there, but the builder never would give us any type of information.
It was expensive. And it's very nice. The first time I ran into it was at Dean's Cemetery and it was a cold winter day and wind was blowing. And to have that chapel out there.
Oh, yeah, it's wonderful. We have so many people. In fact, more and more people are, are using it. It's.
Yes, I haven't noticed.
And some people decided to put, you know, to buy cemetery plots, buy it so they would be right next to it.
I noticed by the obituaries, it just seems like half the funerals are out at the chapel for Hennessy anymore.
I don't know. It's been great because of COVID restrictions with churches. Been great to have that outdoor venue available for them.
Do you think you'll have some kind of a ceremony or anything where you put it up or you're just gonna put it up and say there or?
My thoughts on that, Jack, I'd love to have a ceremony, but it'd be nice if we knew who the donor was.
That's true.
To honor them.
Right.
And I understand they're wanting to keep that anonymous. That's perfectly fine. We're still very, very, very grateful and families, families love it. They really do. And it came at a great time right before this pandemic, so.
But I think what Jack brought up, I think there should be.
Should have something?
Have something.
We can. I'd like to say we'd have it up on Memorial Day, but I'm not sure that. I'm not sure.
Everything's being pushed back because of, you know,
I think the ceremony would be nice to honor the person, the anonymous donor. Secondly.
And they may be there in a spot.
Yeah, they may be there. The second person, I guess I think it provides the inspiration that maybe other people will step forward and help out with community projects.
Okay, well, if you decide to do something.
It can be announced.
If you need to cover it.
Okay. We will proceed on with that. Item H, discussion with possible action to set date for town board long-term planning meeting. I thought you guys had that while I was gone. Sorry. No, I, I knew it had been postponed due to the situations at hand at the time and Tiffany, do you have some input on?
Yes, I do. I talked with the lady who was going to be our facilitator. She has a couple of Saturdays available in April. So does, the school has some Saturdays available for the seminar room. But the more and more I thought about it, we have a new, gonna be a new board member coming on in May, after April fifteenth, who really won't know what's going on. And to me, I think we need to get him on the board, get him going a little bit, and then maybe come in the fall.
I would be fine with that because we time always sounds like it's so far away when you're discussing future events, but it goes so quickly. We're in mid-March nearly and I think we're gonna get into summer with people on vacations and kids' games and all of the things that go on in the summer. So I wouldn't be opposed to going early fall like you have a month or day in mind, September.
No.
I'd rather see us, and unlike you, I think it would be better to get Harold in and let him get acclimated.
Because he won't even go to the, the new.
Training class.
Training class until, I think it's June sixth, isn't it?
Yeah.
June sixth, and so he'll learn some information there. He's been reading up on ordinances and some of the OML stuff. I mean, he's, he's been trying to get acclimated with stuff, but I just really think that let's get him in here and get him going and then.
We're kind of pick up on what you said. I know you've been working with, back in January when we first announced this, that you had been working with all the employees.
I still am.
And getting their input. But this first planning session is gonna be, to me, infrastructure.
The town is gonna be infrastructure. Like the town, like the town planning that we're planning like will be like infrastructure for the town, which will be for like our five-year plan, ten-year plan, stuff like that that we're gonna be looking at so we can start including those into our budgets. I do have, like now I have the, the, I would say public work, streets, water, sewer. They're working on, to me, I asked them for a five-year plan for their vehicles because we have a lot of vehicles that are becoming not in good shape. And so I've asked them for a five-year plan, what, what we need to do with vehicles. So.
I think that's excellent because I remember when I came on the board, we made an ambulance purchase and a police car purchase. And if we had a policy that after so many miles, we replace the thing. In a five-year, three-year, twenty-year plan. The other thing I was thinking, since this is infrastructure, we're looking at the primarily two grant sources to help us out. The Community Block Grant and the REAP Grant.
Yes.
And we'll be busy finishing out the Community Block Grant anyway.
Yes.
And the REAP Grant, we don't have to submit till October.
That will be October, yes.
October. So from that perspective.
We're good to.
To, to lay it.
Yes. We could look at September.
Why don't we, why don't, my suggestion is that we have Tiffany look at some dates, get with the facilitator, see when they're available and and come back with us next month with some dates.
And I think also in January announced that it wouldn't be part of our regular meeting. When we get in our regular meeting, it's, there's too much going on.
No, this would be a Saturday.
Saturday.
Yes, it would be a Saturday.
I know you said that. I just wanted to reemphasize that.
It would be a Saturday.
Where, where, where that's the only thing we do is just.
And with the third round, the, the third phase of the vaccines going on now, really everybody will have, at least the ones that, that wish to get the vaccine will have time to get both doses or at least get signed up and maybe it'll be a more relaxed atmosphere by the time we, we do have the meeting.
I would think at least.
And Tiffany, I have one more thing to bring up. Should this be a public meeting or private?
We have to have it public.
Because of the state law.
Because we'll have a forum there.
I don't think we really have anything that wouldn't, wouldn't want to get out into, into the public arena.
I mean, it's all gonna be public records, so.
I think we need to have pizza too.
I suspect when the people find out we're talking about cereal lines and things like that, they're not gonna be too interested in coming anyway.
I think food is important along with it. Okay. I second that. With item H, discussion with possible action to set date for community planning, including topics like the pavilion and giving program.
Pretty much same do.
If I'm not mistaken, he's thinking more like what Hennessy United did, has done in the past. Like a community planning.
After money. And I think United would be happy sponsoring that with you, the town, or however you wanna work it.
Man, I think that's great. I heard Barb say Hennessy United's gonna take over and plan it and.
And they're making, they have a bill for the pizza.
He must be hungry for pizza.
Did Tina, did Tina facilitate that?
Tina did, uh-huh. She did a great job. I, I'm gonna go through these two handouts. I think this is probably the third or fourth time I've done these two handouts. But the first handout, that gentleman holding the picture, that picture is the Medford Museum. They wanted a museum. The Medford is a half the size of Hennessy. They want a museum. They developed a schematic and then they went out and collected eight hundred thousand and they built their, built their museum. So I think that's example of what can be done. I also have the Key Fisher Library and it's, the Key Fisher Library is nice because they have, you have certain levels of, of donorship levels. And they have done an excellent job of, of putting up their recognition. And this is, both of these are so typical where you have, both of them are where you're, they're standing in, in front of the wall recognizing the donors. And what I would like to see us do, I'd like to see the town council take the lead on it, Barbara, because the incorporation with United, because the way I look at it is this giving program is to help out on the town budget. And so many things within the towns. The town is the only source of development expertise of what it takes financially to accomplish the purpose, whether it's a pavilion or improving the park or the library or whatever. So what I'd like to see is, what I'd like to see is to develop from a community standpoint, what amenities the town would like to have and a priority. It doesn't mean the donor, we never tell a donor what, what it should be for. It's up to the donor to make that decision. But, you know, I think we had two very recent examples of where a donor stepped in and did marvelous thing. And one is the chapel at the cemetery, you know. We never had a go of a chapel at the cemetery and here came a donor that gave us the money. And the other one, Keith, is the Raymond Kokajohn.
Oh, yeah.
Gift. Now, he came in, what I think is marvelous, you know, I added up what he donated. I don't know if the Tennessee Foundation ever put a monetary figure on it.
We have not released that number.
Pardon?
So we have not released that number.
Okay. But anyway, what was marvelous about that is the emphasis was for money for scholarships for college. And he came in and said, okay, money for college, but also money for going to the technical schools in Key Fisher and Enid and whatever.
Yeah.
And to me, that's part of the energy of a donor program. And you've got good examples around here. The Lot Memorial Clock, I think is one of the good examples. And if we plan for these for long range, the best example I can give is you, Bert, because you reserved lots out there. You didn't sell them hoping someday to have a chapel out there. And I don't know how long you've been thinking about that, but it had to be several years.
Several years.
Several years. So we can't, from a community standpoint, we can't say in two years and five years, we're gonna have, we're gonna have this and this and this. I think when you look at Oklahoma City, I think they've been at it for about forty, over forty years with their Brick Town and Downtown Development Program. And I think maybe for Hennessy to even be longer than that because we don't have the financial resources that Oklahoma City has. So what I'd like to see, we had the one meeting, Barbara, which was marvelous. I think there were over fifty people there from Hennessy. What about, probably about fifteen or so from Enid at Kingdale. Yeah.
Is this, not to interrupt, was this the meeting over at Enid Up's banquet?
Yeah, you were there.
Yeah, okay. I just wanna make sure I was thinking straight.
You know, if we want these things, like a pavilion, and I, I'd like to see the library totally funded. I, Tiffany, I don't know how much the library is costing the annual budget on that, but if we could fund these things, set up our endowments where we can carry this expense through the endowment, freeing up money within the town budget for other things, streets, go for the pavilion, that sort of thing. So what I'd like to see, Barbara, is another community-wide meeting and say, what, what do you like? What are your priorities? And we could publish the priorities, but saying, now, look, you can give anything you want. We don't tell you what to do. Because, you know, somebody, their passion might be the rodeo. True. So that's what I'm suggest, suggesting.
Well, and you say you want the town to take the lead. I really think, Richard, that the town, which when I say town, it would be the town board members or myself, I really think that this is where the Hennessy United, because I have view, I don't know about you guys, but I have viewed the Hennessy United more like like a chamber, like a, you know, that type of, to help with economic development, to help with different things like that. And to me, that, they're the avenue that would do this and then the town would support them in this. The town would help them with this.
Richard, I, and Barb, please correct me where I may be wrong on this because it's been several years ago that when the board, the United Board first was formed, it was called twenty-ten. It was formed in two thousand to, to try to lay out what the citizens wanted Hennessy to look like in twenty-ten. And there was a meeting, and that was before you moved back here, there was a meeting of the community-wide meeting and.
We had about seventy-five people there.
Yeah, we had a lot of, we had a great turnout and a lot of spinoffs that Hennessy United is still doing today. Barb, I think most of those goals were accomplished by twenty-ten. Am I wrong? I think most of them were, but so I, I, and I, I guess my thoughts are, I would like to see Hennessy United facilitate that because I feel like as a town board, we can, we can participate, be there certainly, but I would just like to see them facilitate that and gather in people to see what their vision is for, for the future. Because of.
Well, I think, I'll expand on that. It's not only the vision community, but the friends at the library, the Hennessy Foundation.
The education.
And it comes down to advertising. We've had that marvelous meeting, Barbara, but what have we done since then? My experience is it takes a personal contact to get people involved. I mean, to make those clubs, not make them, but to get them aware of what's going on and for them to send representatives. It takes advertising and I, and generally these foundation programs, you know, donors are not you don't go through a process saying, I think so-and-so will donate and I think so-and-so will donate. You don't do that. You advertise, not any different than say a car dealership, say, or a grocery. You advertise, not any different than say a car dealership, say, or a grocery store. And that's where we're failing on this. Now, who's got the money?
I think the town does.
We've got that hotel tax.
So Richard, what are you talking about advertising? Are you talking about advertising for your, for the planning meeting, or for, I mean, because this is what we're talking about, is the planning meeting?
Yeah, I think you wanna advertise for the legacy fund, right?
I wanna advertise the giving program, which any town's do. They have a little brochure and mail it out.
But I don't think the actual municipality pays for that.
Why not? We've got the hotel tax.
I don't think you can pay, use, I don't know about that.
Kind of like the grocers? Oh, they were paid for by, you know, the people that put ads in, in that field. And, and like the Hennessy Alliance puts them out, and they get the sponsors from, you know, people that you wanna advertise. If I, if I send you a flyer, you're gonna stay at my motel, you're gonna get my red carpet, that's what you're looking at. And kind of Hennessy, the town, we don't have that part of the duty, the, as a group that does that.
But we're not, we don't have.
Richard, I'm kind of lost. Help me clarify, because the agenda item is discussion with possible action to set a date for community planning, including topics like the pavilion and giving program. Are you, I'm, I'm kind of lost, I'm sorry. Are, are you thinking of like a town-wide meeting, like we were thinking before? Or just putting something out to advertise the legacy fund?
Both.
Okay.
When, when you have example of two close nearby towns, you know, they are, I haven't talked to Kingfisher, any individual Kingfisher person, and say, how, how did you go about this? I didn't talk to the, this gentleman that's holding the thing is the Baptist minister in Medford.
Okay.
And how did you go about it? You know, they don't have a vision committee, or I'm not trying to be negative. They don't have a vision committee in Medford. They don't have a vision committee in Kingfisher. Who did it? Was it the Chamber of Farmers? Or was it the town government that said, we wanna expand the library, have a new library, and they did this? And these, you know, these examples are all across the board. One of them is the museum in Enid. You walk in there and the wall is covered. You go into Bass Memorial Hospital. I like their sign because they use.
Tree leaves?
Wheat.
Wheat, yeah, wheat.
And put the donor's name on it. And I thought that was kind of marvelous since we kind of. Who did this? All I know is nothing is happening. Nothing. We had this marvelous meeting. My, pro, I don't wanna, the vision committee, I think, is too small. You don't have the financial resources. And that education project is marvelous, but it, all the things that you do with that educational, like it takes a lot of time. Because I was going to your meetings, and it takes a lot of time to do all the things. The giving program, it's not only the vision committee, not only the town council, but it's the Friends of the Library and the Hennessy Education.
Foundation.
Foundation.
Are you thinking a meeting of those groups to get together?
I'm thinking it should be a community-wide effort. And.
At our first meeting, Richard, what we first did was we decided on what everyone in the group decided that was important to them. Say it was education, say it was community events, you know, what's going on? We don't have anything other than the Pat Hennessy celebration. And things, we, we got those things. And then the people who were interested in that, we had committees. They went to a certain table if they were interested in education, if they were interested in a new swimming pool, if they wanted a new auditorium, which we were able to get.
The walking trail.
Yeah, the walking, whatever they wanted, then they would go and they would work on those. And so then we had committees. And then they, those committees later met and made decisions about what they would do. We had an art, arts area. And that's the way it worked, because, I mean, we just brought people from all, all, all sorts, you know, who were interested in making the community better and wanted to be involved.
Well, there's two thousand people in Henness, within the Hennessy city limits, and I think, I saw, figured there's, there's four thousand people in the Hennessy School District. And I'm so, I'm so happy to see fifty people come to that meeting, but how do we reach the other people? We need advertising. And, you know, I, I worked in sales, and you can have a good product and all of that, have good equipment and all of that. But if you don't have a marketing program, you're not gonna get anywhere.
And you're talking about using the, the hotel and motel tax as a way of marketing, correct? Spending money to market.
Asking, we send out a, a couple times a year, send out a brochure. And make it really nice, and have a really nice website.
But we've got to get this, we gotta start somewhere. And I think this, I think that's what this is.
If I had a website, if I had the website, I'd say, you know, I'd cite that chapel, cemetery chapel. I'd cite the Kokajon gift. I'd cite the Lot Clock in Plaza at Bullfoot Park. And the Pat Hennessy Park, that was a gift from, I can't think of her name.
Ailer.
Ailer. I had a website, I'd say, Hennessy has a tradition of giving. Somebody told me that the grounds for the old school was a donation. And I think somebody told me that the rodeo grounds were a gift, that the Hennessy tax dollars didn't go to put that together. But to emphasize that Hennessy has had a tradition of giving. And I would emphasize that any, every donor can select what they want to donate to. And here are some of the things that were identified. For me, what I'm identifying is do endowment funds to relieve the town budget. If we had an endowment large enough to fund the operation of the library, it would free a lot of money up for streets, or maybe get started on the pavilion, whatever.
Richard, I, I don't disagree with you at all. I think a website would be, would be a great tool to reach people. I'm, I'm not sure that the town can use tax dollars to fund that.
Let's do this.
That would be something we just have to check through the legal channels to see.
It's very easy to do if Tiffany would pop an email to Oklahoma Municipally.
Yeah, we can do that. Plus, we've got our own attorney. I mean, we have a city attorney.
Pardon?
I said, plus, we have our city attorney who should be able to answer that.
I, I don't agree with, with, I think they should go beyond the city attorney. The Oklahoma Municipally offers free services.
Yeah, I, I understand that. And Tiffany just said our accounting firm, and they're the ones that really know state law and finance. They're probably at the top of the, the top of the pyramid on that. But I.
Hey, can I jump in? Richard, and I just verified it. There is a website that you paid for, for the Hennessy Foundation. And the problem, I believe Angie has had completely developing it out, is lack of response from the foundation board. Because she's asked for photos and information and things like that, and has gotten nothing, crickets. So you do have a website. Someone has to take action from the board.
From my experience.
To finish developing it out.
From my experience, you can have a website. But from my experience working in sales, you gotta do printed advertising to direct people.
Well, sure, yeah, the website's not magic. You have, you have to promote and send people to that.
I remember when we first computed, it was eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, when we started getting these computers, little computers and websites. And the thinking at that time is, if I get a website, I'm gonna get all the business. I'm gonna capture all the business if I have a website.
Yeah.
No.
No, it doesn't work that way.
Website is level two. There's gotta be a level one advertising.
Yeah, I agree. And especially the age group that you would need to market to is still in the current world.
Now, if you tied it in together, Keith, one thing I'd like to see is getting the email addresses of all the Hennessy graduates. It's available. All these classes that are having reunions. They're there to have a mailing list. I point to Prairie Quilt, she's got fifteen thousand people on her mailing list. But if you had your legacy program going, and you had that mailing list, you know, you have your web, Hennessy website, but have that mailing list, and say, this is what happened in Hennessy schools. We, we beat with tonga and football. And we got some new equipment for our gymnasium, we got some new books for our library. And by the way, so-and-so donated this much money for this, to help the school out and help the teachers out.
Right.
You gotta advertise. Nothing's happening. Just nothing is happening.
Well, Richard, I, I would suggest, let's have Tiffany check with our attorney. And she can check with the OML and come back to us. I personally don't feel like the, I mean, I feel like the legacy fund is a standalone entity, not connected with the town. And I don't know that we can, we're just gonna have to get a legal opinion. I'm not opposed to spending the hotel motel tax money for what you're saying. I'm just saying, I feel like we need to, we need to get a better, we need to get a legal opinion, is where I'm coming from. And why don't we table this and let Tiffany check into that? You might get with the legacy board. I, I, I don't even know who's on that board. But tell them that Angie's awaiting information from some.
You guys are really confusing me. I don't even know who the legacy board is. Are you talking about Hennessy United?
Yeah, that, we have a legacy board, uh, I'm trying to think of who else on it. Scotty's chairman.
You're talking about the endowment?
And Stacy, yeah, uh huh, yeah. One thing, Richard, back with Hennessy United doing this with these committees, what we tried to do, and it didn't always work, was to ask a member of the board or school board, whatever it involved, whether we're gonna need finances or something like that, to meet with that committee. And like, we had a beautification committee. Well, then if we came and we wanted to put in fifty thousand tulips or whatever at the park, then we would come to the town board and, and get them involved. But we would have a member who would know what was going on. And they were like a liaison to that.
I was on that one.
To that committee, yeah. We had a tourism committee that handled advertising to get tourists here. And then we would sometimes get the town or other people to pay for advertising for people to come here. So I think that we can all work together, is what I'm saying.
I think so.
And I think within the vision committee, I think based with my, the way we've been operating, it might be viewed, this giving program viewed as supporting vision committee and the projects the vision committee wants to do. For the giving program to be owned community-wide, I think you gotta bring in everybody.
Yes. Oh, yeah. That's why I'm saying, every mother's club, every, you know, try to get a representative at this community meeting. That, that'll give us a widespread, and of course, anybody who wants to come.
That's why if the town does it, it'll be, look more like just a town planning meeting. Whereas if Hennessy United does it, then it looks more like a town-wide thing, where the school gets involved, the town gets involved, the Lions get involved.
Tiffany, I've asked, the Cherokee Strip Community Foundation publishes all their, they've got four hundred projects, endowment funds. The Oklahoma Communities Foundation hasn't done that. They're gonna do that. And you might have a town, you may have a town like Elba. They may have a City Park Endowment Fund. They may have a school fund. They may have a cemetery fund. They probably have a sports fund. They've got six, seven, eight funds. And so, to say the town board has nothing to do with it.
I'm not saying the town board doesn't have anything to do with it. I'm saying is if the town does it solely, I mean, and takes the lead on it, people will look at it as if it's more town-oriented, like city-oriented, like infrastructure and stuff like that. Then if Hennessy United does it, if Hennessy United does it, then they're gonna look at it as it's more universal, such as.
I agree.
No, it's gotta be, it's gotta be everybody, not.
I know, and that's why I'm saying if Hennessy United takes the lead on it, and then we support them, the school supports them, the Lions Club supports them, then it'll be everybody involved.
It'll be way more encompassing. And a perfect example of, of the way I look at that is how many citizens do we have at these meetings? I, people are apathetic, I'm sorry, but as long as they turn on the faucet and give water and their trash gets picked up, and the neighbor's dogs aren't barking too loud, I guess they're pretty happy. You know?
Or opening.
So I, I think, I think having Hennessy United spearhead this is more encompassing. And I'm saying that, a lot of that's coming from what I saw way back in two thousand at that first meeting. It was, we had a wide variety of people from all walks of life. We had people from the farm community, from the main street community, from the education community, everybody.
Restaurants, grocery stores.
Yeah, and.
And it didn't work, so what do you do now?
But it did.
It did work. I realized, I, I realized that those first ten years, we were so gung ho. And I think that we got a, a lot accomplished in that time. And, I mean, we're still working to do things. Like the events, right after we did that, we started having the Heritage Festival for, for people, you know, it was one of those that we had the, the Hispanic community to join, and we did the Czech community, and had them all together, and we had meals. And we did the hometown hooteness. Anyhow, we, we got into having some events. And we brought back the Pat Hennessy celebration that had been gone. But anyhow, I, I think that, I think that the excitement back then.
The personnel is what you're lacking. We all know what you're seeing, what you're saying.
Yes.
You want the email address. Well, who's gonna do that? Do you wanna do it? Do you wanna go get all the emails addresses?
I think it could be easily done.
Okay, then go get them, put them on the website, or put them, and start advertising for this.
I would be glad, I would be glad to talk to any group of any.
Do what? I can't understand.
I'll be glad to talk to any group about doing this. But I'm not gonna go down to the Hennessy Education Foundation and say, I, Richard Sumnack, want you to do this, you know?
You don't have to. I don't know where you.
Let me back up. But Barbara, you haven't, you, to me, the vision committee is sort of like another Lions Club. You have these activities. The question is, do you, how do we get endowments established? You have these activities. The question is, do you, how do we get endowments established?
Well, we established one, you know, the Legacy. We got that at least established.
Richard, are you mostly wanting to promote that? Is that?
Yeah, we're advertising. That's all I want to do.
I think that you're going about it wrong. I, I disagree with your philosophy on it. I think you have to have a project. It says right here, the town of Medford wanted to build a community museum. They had a project.
Yeah, we need to do that. I agree.
I think, I think your concept is wrong. I think if you want to build a pavilion, tell the community, "We want to build this pavilion." And see what happens.
I think you have, I, I agree with you one hundred percent.
That's how I see it.
But anyway, like the libraries, like you're talking about King Fisher wasn't that the way it was? The library was wanting to build a bigger and better library.
And that's a municipal project, so of course.
Correct.
It's the same way with the auditorium, Richard.
And that's how the museum was built in Crescent.
And we pursued that. This is what we want.
Same way they want it.
Instead of saying, "We got an endowment," you can, you can give to whatever you want.
Well.
I mean, I, I, I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm saying I disagree with that. I think you're going to have a better result if you have a, a picture of your project.
I agree.
Same way with the swimming pool, example. We had a picture of that, and we presented it to the community, and the community said, "Yeah, that's what we want."
And that's what the community wanted. They wanted a swimming pool.
Yeah, because we had.
That was on our list. Hennessy United helped you guys to get signatures of people so they could get grants and loans. I mean, we worked together.
Here's what I'm saying, Robert. The fabulous dome, the fabulous new auditorium, and the fabulous swimming pool had a tax base to support it. You have, when you talk about the Hennessy community, there's three parts of the Hennessy community. There's a taxable base that's inside the city limits. The second one is within the school district. And the third one is the Hennessy people that were raised in this town. They might live in North Carolina. They might live in Oregon. They had that emotional tie to Hennessy. And if they knew there was a giving program, they might donate.
Well.
They wouldn't have done this with Medford dollars. They had donors outside.
Sure, oh, yeah.
That came in. They wouldn't have built this museum if it weren't for outside donors. So you, how do you tap into that situation? How do you tell those people in North, Hennessy people, that people that were raised in this town that now live in North Carolina, Oregon, that there's a giving program, we're not advertising it?
Well, Richard, I think, I think as far as the town's concerned, and kind of for the sake of, of time, because we're sparing light, but I go back to thinking, I think I understand what you're wanting to do. You're wanting to advertise the Legacy Fund. And Tiffany will check on the legalities of using our hotel motel tax. It's for tourism. We were told early on it could not be used for breaking mortar projects. I don't know where this is going to fall, but she'll get a legal opinion and then come back to us and.
And that question Tiffany should be asked this, like the library and the pavilion. You know, these, these are.
I understand that, but we don't have an actual project right now for the library or the pavilion. Now, if we had an actual pavilion project that where the town is actually working on, then, I, because I knew where you're going with it, then we may be able to, to do, you know, say that. But if we don't actually have a project that we're planning, then I don't know that that would hold up.
But the question is, can we use that money to advertise where?
Yeah, I have that.
If we're doing, if we're advertising this giving program to support those functions that are normally funded and maintained by the town government, that's how that question should be asked to the Oklahoma Municipal League Legal Staff.
But the thing is, is it's not dedicated totally just to the town. It could be in that Legacy Fund Foundation. Can't it be?
Shouldn't Hennessy United advertise that since they're the, the, they operate that?
Can it be, um, can I not donate to this Legacy Foundation to go to, um, say, the.
Promotion of the rodeo or promotion of the, you know.
Or the school.
Or the school, or the Lions Club. Then you're not actually talking just solely municipal government.
Yeah.
And so you're wanting the municipal government to spend money that's for other projects also.
I would say, um, I would say in cooperation with others, we could do, I get, I see your point from a legal standpoint. But if we, say we wanted to send out two a year. The Friends of the Library has some money to educate.
We will. Yeah, that won't happen with the foundation.
They don't have any money?
We, we have, we have money, but we're, we're limited on what we, we have brochures and stuff that we, we have that we, to hand out. And I can't, I can't speak solely on it. I have to, we'd have to talk about it as.
I have no trouble if, if we just advertise, uh, using the hotel money for town-supported projects, like the library, parks, that sort of cemetery.
What I'll do is I will send this out to OML and our accountant. I'll also get ahold of Medford's, the city of Medford.
Okay.
To see if the city had any type of, in their advertising. And I'll also get ahold of Dave at King Fisher, Dave Swalinski. Probably said his name wrong. And to see if he had any, if the town does anything. But I will get ahold of those four people. And we can put this back on next month. How about that? Okay, can we do that?
Yeah. And when I started pushing this, the whole idea was to alleviate the pressure on the town budget. And if, if we can get some of these things in doubt, the library, parks, cemetery, that makes money available for the streets or have matching funds to go after grants to build the pavilion.
Yeah.
Okay. Topic. Item, very marked, challenge. Accept, reject, any resignations not received prior to voting agenda? Item six, new business. Item seven, citizen's comment. Item eight, councilperson's report. Keith, you got any?
I have a question. Where are we at on the signs for the town? The King, or, or signs is supposed to be?
I'm still waiting on approval from ODOT.
Okay.
And the problem there is that they are.
So that's almost for a couple of signs. What about the rest of them? That could be, are they up?
Um, that's for the four entry signs.
Right. But aren't there, weren't there quite a few other signs around?
But, yes, but we kind of wanted to do the entry signs.
First and then.
We kind of wanted to do them all at the same time. It's kind of like a, a big unveiling. At that time, we're also going to put that, um, that logo on the city truck. We're gonna, um, we're gonna kind of do an unveiling all in public at the same time.
Are they outside, out there?
And part of the thing that delayed that, Keith, was expansion of fifty-one, the widening and.
Yes.
All of that. It's been a nightmare with ODOT.
Well, we have, we had to relocate vent pipes on pipeline for them.
Yeah. Okay.
I just want to say the new sidewalk on the south of that building looks really, really nice. That was a good job. And I really liked the way the town took care of the leaks that they've had and worked on them very quickly. So I'm, I'm very proud of our town on the way it has taken care of the leaks.
Yeah. I agree. Kudos through, through that horrendous snow and the freezing, freezing temperatures. I'm sure the water people were.
They, they wanted them.
I'm sure they were going to be, so kudos to, to everybody. There's one more example of us working.
Are they doing the south side?
Um, yes, we haven't, we'll bring it back to the Board to approve the south side. We're just doing one side at a time. We got to get ahold of Mises.
I talked to Buddy a little bit. He said Mises was wanting to do some additional things possibly in, around his area.
I mean, when you do that, when you go to South Oak and back on the north side to the alley, with like, probably about four foot section right there at the alley, is there any way they can finish that off?
That's what I thought they were going to do. I, I seen Buddy the day they were forward. You're talking about on Oklahoma? Yeah. But he said he didn't figure that in, so they didn't do it.
That's why they have to figure it in.
I still like what they've done. No, they've done a good job.
There's about there is, is a corner around that building that was like, uh, it's probably a four foot, maybe wide, maybe eight foot long section right there that's kind of dirt and it dropped off right there. It'd look better if it kind of curved down, so when people walk off that, down that sidewalk, if they get too close to that building.
I wish they would have done that.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, maybe something we could ask him to go back and do as part of his quote on doing the south side.
That's why I was asking if they did the south side, they could figure that in.
Or, uh, at that point, they're, they're going to sell it themselves, maybe want to do it.
Okay. You got anything else, Wes?
No, I'm good.
I'm comfortable. Richard, Councilperson.
Can I add something?
Absolutely.
Um, speaking of that, I would like to, um, I was just going to let you guys know. I think on the agenda, I'm going to add a spot for town administrator report, because there's really no.
I've been thinking about that.
There's really no place for me to give, like, stuff that's going on and different things. And so you guys go through councilperson's reports, citizens' comments, and it's like, I really don't have any place to tell you anything.
And I really think it should be toward the top of the agenda, because I think it will alleviate a lot of main questions we've had as we go through the agenda.
I agree.
I actually have been thinking about that. You? I was going to bring that up to you.
Okay. And then, um, just to let you guys know, we're working, um, the, the department managers and I have been working on the employee handbook. So either in April or May, we'll be bringing the employee handbook to you guys to try to get approved, to make some changes, actually redo the handbook. Um, I am going to start this, over this next month, working on budget. So if you guys have any ideas of different projects, different things you'd like to see in that coming budget, please, um, please come see me, come talk to me, whatever, whatever you'd like to see. And also, I, um, talking with the managers, we talked about employee evaluations. Um, and so we're working on a form, um, and we are going to start doing those, make sure that those are done, so.
Awesome.
I thought I would give you guys.
Sounds like you're, is it monthly, James, right?
Yes, monthly means.
With the department heads is getting things accomplished. That's great. Good.
Are there towns like, say, King Fisher, do they go through that employee evaluation?
Um, I'm sure they do employee evaluations. It's like annual evaluations, yeah. Um, and also to let you guys know that O-MAG, the planning that we were going to do with O-MAG, I think we were going to do it in November, um, they're going to come in May. I've got your message after I already did this. May thirteenth. So it's going to be a long meeting in May, um, because at the end of the agenda, they're going to do their O-MAG training, so.
Okay. Do I need to be here?
It would be good if you could come. I, I mean, even if you're going to be late, if you could come.
I'll be full, full of, I, my daughters have ballgames that night. We have three ballgames. One of them has two games, the other has one. And, uh, I'm going to be at the ballgame.
Did you say O-MAG was at the end of the town council meeting?
Yes, it'll be at the end of it. Yeah, they're going to come and do, um, it's, it's a board, um, training where they come and they speak. Um, they, they give you like the definitions of the different types of boards, tell you kind of some of the things that you can and can't do as a board, um, just. And then by us doing this, um, then we will be able to, um, with them being our insurance company, we'll get a rebate after.
Are they coming from Oklahoma City?
Yes.
Wouldn't it be better to have them first?
And they told me to put them at the end.
Well, they did.
Yes.
Well, they must like us.
And this will be Harold's first meeting, right?
Yes. Yeah, because I asked them, would they like to come in May, since we would have a new board member, and they said yes, so.
I've got better reason why about that.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
What's that?
Roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Bert?
Thank goodness. I mean, yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right, this will be a meeting of Hennessy Utility Authority, March eleventh, twenty twenty-one. It's about nine twelve. Uh, roll call, please.
Keith?
Here.
Wes?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Wes?
I'm here.
Richard?
Here.
Okay, consider approval of consent agenda, minutes of the meeting. Approval of claims as follows: February purchase orders, fifteen thousand, seven seventy-eight, eighty-eight. March purchase orders, sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars, twenty-nine cents. March HUA, Oklahoma Water Resources Board's semi-annual payment, forty-six thousand, six sixty-one, seventy-seven. March meter deposit refunds, one hundred thirty dollars. Item C, transfer seven hundred and twenty dollars from pooled checking, one four three six eight six, to meter deposit CD, three five zero two eight. Treasurers' report. Any additions or changes to the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second that. Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Wes?
Oh, yeah.
Richard?
Any citizen's comments? Okay. Other scheduled business. Discuss, accept, approve, deny, reject, or end or take action on the following. Item A, discussion with possible action to proof contracts with or construction for sewer line extension on north side of Highway fifty-one. Tiffany, time to settle to you. I think we're ready to.
Um, once we sign these contracts, these are, um, we awarded the bid last month. These are the contracts for that bid. Um, once we sign the contract, then they have thirty days to begin work.
Okay.
I move that we approve the contracts with or construction for sewer line extension on north side of Highway fifty-one.
Second, roll call.
Keith?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Wes?
Wes?
Do we not have to have an engineer's report or not a engineer's report, but?
You can't discuss it. You're already taking wrong.
Okay.
Kay?
Richard?
Yes. Tiffany, I do have a question. Where's the money coming from? Is it from, Roger, or there was a, you have a loan?
We have, we have loan. We have, we still have loan funds available for that.
Yeah, I remember you mentioning that, that we hadn't spent all that loan money.
All right. Item B, accept or reject any resignation. Item five, new business. Item six, citizens' comments. Item seven, councilperson reports. Anybody got anything on the utility agenda to address?
Um, our, um, the reed water lines that we're having replaced, we're upgrading them to six-inch lines. They're submitting the plans to DEQ on Monday. So as soon as we get the approval back from DEQ, then we'll be ready to go out for bid.
They called today.
All right. With the town being their pipes, I mean, running their. With the town being their pipes, I mean, running their water all the time, does that make a real big difference to our water system or...
Actually, I think it helped our water system.